We're live, okay. Welcome to the October 11th, 2010 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are two items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city clerk staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than 2 minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Will the city clerk please sound the agenda items?
First item is discussion of defined benefit pension plan. This is presented by Randy Logan, Georgia Municipal Association.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here. Actually, I would just like to introduce Rocky Joyner. He is an enrolled actuary for Segal Company. He's a nationally known actuary and very well versed in the field, and he's going to give the presentation for us. Segal has been the actuary for the GMEV's defined benefit plans, I think, for about five years now. So, I'll turn it over to Rocky.
Good evening. We do have a formal presentation in front of you, but this is your time, so if I say something or you see something on the presentation you want to ask a question, feel free to stop me at that point, and we'll just walk through it then. Otherwise, I'll just keep wandering through the presentation until I get done. So, we'll do that. We are looking at, what we're going to do tonight are three particular things. One is a summary of the current city retirement program. Two will be a review of the January 1st, 2010 valuation results. And then, three will just be a summary of what's going on in governmental plans around the country, as far as plan design and things that are happening around the country in different places. Your particular plan, of course, employees are not in social security. You provide three retirement plans currently that you have structured. One's a 2.75% multiplier DB plan with employee contributions of 3% with an age 65 retirement. You also have a mandatory defined contribution plan where each of the city and the employee contributes 3.75% of pay to it. And you have an optional DC plan where you have an employer match of 1% if the employee pays up to 2%. The combination of your three plans for a 25-year person to 30-year person is expected to yield about 70 to 90% of pay, depending on how much they take advantage of the DC plan and exactly where they fall in the scale. Social Security would typically replace about half that amount for your average salaried employee. Your higher-paid employees would get significantly less than that as a social security benefit because social security is a progressive benefit. The more money you make, the less benefits you get. And the lower-paid employees get a whole lot more in their social security than even the middle-of-the-road people. Your plan design, as you see it here structured in front of you, being a combination of defined benefit and defined contribution, is what's known in the profession as a hybrid plan. Hybrid plans take combinations of both types of plans. I'll talk about that a little bit more later tonight. I do make that point up front that you, in designing this initially from the creation of the city, you've already gone to a point where many cities are moving towards, you're already there. So, just bring that to your attention as we go through that. You do have a fairly young plan. Your contribution rate requirement for 2011 is 3.87% of pay. That's a fairly low contribution amount for the city for a defined benefit plan. It's about $150,000. I'm not saying it's insignificant, but it's low compared. The average contribution rate in the GMA plans is about 12%. And many of those plans are a lot more mature than your plan is, and they have various ranges of benefits and various levels of when they're funded and when they made the plan changes and things of that sort. But that is the average in the system. Your plan is 80, a little over 80% funded. It's a very solid funded ratio, especially for a plan as young as your plan is. You've only been in existence about three or four years. So, you have a young base, very well-funded position. The average plan in GMEVs is about 82%, but the average funding level for new plans being around less than five years is down around 60%. So, what happens is, you come in with a plan, many plans initiate initial past service. You did not do that. You started from day one and been funding accordingly, and just had a little bit of prior service that you had to pick up because of the way you structured the plan originally. The other thing I think is interesting, on an accrued benefit basis, nothing projected for future salary increases, just on what's earned to date, you're actually almost 110% funded on a market value basis. And that takes into account the market crash of 2008. So, that's a very strong position to be in for a pension plan. You also, your unfunded that you do have, which projects future salary increases, is being amortized over a 15-year period. State law would allow you to go all the way up to 30 years, and state law would actually allow you to even do some other odd things in that, which is level percent of pay instead of level dollar. You're doing 15-year amortization as a level dollar amortization. GMEVs as a whole is very conservative in their amortization for their cities. We recommend an amortization that's a level dollar amount. The average for the system as a whole is about a little over 10 years, almost 11 years, for the average amortization period in the system. What happens with that, if you have a bad year, like 2008, well, 2008's not a bad year. 2008 is a totally complete disastrous year, okay? Unheard of since the 1930s. But if you have something as nasty as 2008, the GMEV's program, by having been so conservative all along, allows cities some flexibility to get through that ugly year because 2009 ended up being a pretty good year and got most of our cities back on an evil, even track going forward. So, we try to take care of the cities in the good years by being more conservative, so in the bad years, we have some wiggle room to work with. You currently had 79 employees, an increase from a couple of years ago, but you have a fairly young group. Your average age is only about 38.8, average service 2.3. The typical GMEV's plans' average age would probably be in the mid-40s, 45, 46, with about 10 years of service. So, as you're, if your group were to stay, average age 38, 34 years of service, if you had turnover like that, your costs would stay very, very low. We would anticipate you maturing over time to a certain extent, that's not something we can predict or go forward with. But that would be a long period of time in doing that, and it's not going to affect your funded status because you're paying your full accrual benefit each year as you move along. So, that's a positive feature of that. We then have, I'm looking at, do I not go fast enough? There we go. Now, we're looking at Slide 4. We did some projections of your current program, just taking the current people in the program, projecting them out, saying that your population would stay with about 80 employees, salaries would continue to grow about 3.5% a year. I know salaries have not been growing that much recently, but over a 30-year time horizon, that's the assumption we're looking at and using. It assumes you're going to get about a 7.25% return. By 2009, you've got that. 2008, you did not. 2010 is mixed and on the border for that. Last few weeks has been pretty good. So, we'll see where we end up at the end of the year. You do have 15-year funding. The projections that we are showing, looking on Slide 5, over there, Slide 5, we indicate as a percentage of pay, as we go forward, we don't really expect any large spikes in your contribution rate. It's fairly flat over the next 15, 20-year period. Now, what could change with that? There are two factors that can significantly affect that. One is if we go into a downward market spiral for a longer period of time, you might see some increases in that because of investment returns. That's not predicted by the investment consultant that works for GMEVs, and we're expected maybe to have a slower period of growth, but not, nothing like 2008, or 2001, or 2002. The only other thing that could really impact this greatly is if you decided to vote and give all kinds of prior service to people and increase, right now, your average age is 2.3. If you gave a lot of extra service to the past, it instantaneously created unfunded for you. You didn't do that when you started the plan. I don't see you doing that now, but that's the kind of thing that would increase your funding percentage quickly and in a hurry. Otherwise, as your folks age, as you go through the system over the next 15 to 20 years, we might see some gradual increase, but that's not something that I can predict because I don't know how you're going to behave. You may rather just turn people over and keep your average service down and then keep a younger pool. We were just talking about cities around the country and the way they behave with their employee groups. I had one city out in Louisiana, they didn't want to hire, they wanted everybody to be young, they wanted short service, they wanted to crank them through and get rid of them. Had another plan in South Florida, they wouldn't hire anybody under the age of 40. They were an older community, older population, they wanted their city workers to reflect their population in their city. So, our best projection right now is a very stable contribution rate for you going forward, leading to, in Slide 6, Slide 6 is just dollars. Your dollar amount's supposed to go up. That's because your salaries are supposed to go up. Even if your percent of pay stays the same, they'll go up because of dollars. I hope that's not a surprise to anybody, but that's just the way the plan works. Slide 7 is, Slide 7 shows, of course, at the end of 15 years, we anticipate you guys will be fully funded. At that point, you'll be paying normal costs. If the market behaves appropriately, that's where you would end up at going forward. In reality, what's going to happen somewhere out at 15 years, some years, the market's going to be good, you're going to be above 100% funded. Some years, it's going to be poor, you can drop below 100%. And we'll use some smoothing techniques to make sure you don't get sticker shock in the bad years and don't get too complacent in the good years. So, that's, we'll try to keep that level going through there. I'm going to stop right there just for a second. That is your plan. Very strongly funded plan, very young group. You've not done anything, how can I say this? You've not done anything starting out the city that's going to shoot yourself in the foot long-term right now. You actually have done a nice job structuring a plan. It is a hybrid combination type plan, and I would commit to the city council what you've done to this point. It looks like a really sharp plan. I like what you've done from a, from a design standpoint. Mr. Mayor?
Question. Obviously, we're looking at a 15-year path, and I know, like you said, it's hard to predict because, you know, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, maybe total turnover, maybe the same people. Is there a chance that, you know, you project another 15 years out that we could get ourselves in trouble or our costs way out of line? Or, I know that's, that's just an opinion because you can't predict it.
It is. What I can tell, of course, my crystal ball 30 years is maybe a little better than yours, but not much, all right? Could something happen in the economy and in the structure of the U.S. economy that makes you have a problem down the road? Answer is yes. It always exists as a possibility. However, given what I know about the GMEV's funding structure, given what I know about their conservatism and the way they look at the things, it's not something that will, you'll wake up in year 20 and say, oh, my, what happened to us? It'll be something that you can do a projection like this every so often, make sure you're on track, see if changes come about, and things need to be modified at that point you can. It's not something that's going to catch you off guard.
Okay.
I've got a couple of comments. Number one is, as you said, it's to your advantage in a defined benefit plan if you do have some turnover and your average age stays low.
Correct.
But as far as I'm aware, it's illegal to base hiring on age or fire employees to keep the average age low.
Right.
So, I mean, it's in our best interest if we don't have high turnover from a city point, may not be from a defined benefit point, but from a city point, it's definitely in our best, best interest if we keep employees for a long time, which kind of works against us. Also, we started in a disaster year, or right around a disaster year.
Yes, you did.
So, we have nowhere to go but up. I mean, if we had started in 2000, or 2000, between 2000 and 2004, I mean, this graph would look completely and totally different, and we could be in some trouble going forward or take a longer time to get back where we need to be if we had, you know, put everything in the market in 2004, 2005, correct?
It is possible. Couple of things, though, in variance to that. One, you didn't give prior service. So, you didn't open yourself up to a lot of fluctuation in the market, even from day one in the get-go with the way you structured your plan. You kept it minimal. Your plan going forward, most of your cost is future accruals. You haven't given a lot to the past. A lot of the cities that ran into big troubles during the 2000s are the ones that gave big increases to prior service and created unfunded. You did not do that. So, I think that's, that's an important point to remember in structuring the thing.
Okay. But we still, as a city, we're the ones that bear the risk of fluctuations in the market.
Yes.
Completely. Not the employee, but us as a city.
Correct.
Okay. Also, how much does this plan cost us each year just to maintain? Because I know defined benefit plans are usually much more costly to maintain on an annual basis than a defined contribution plan typically is.
What do you mean by cost to maintain?
Well, having to have the actuarial reports and all done each year, just the tax returns, all of that, you know, defined contribution plans are really pretty basic, where a defined benefit plan is much more expensive to.
Defined contribution plans hide their cost well, but that's what they do. Let me answer your question because I have it right up here. For the year 2011, your administrative cost to keep the plan running is about $13,000. That includes administrative, actuarial, investment consulting, the whole gamut. And that's with, under the GMEV's umbrella. If you were a standalone plan trying to run the system on your own, the cost would be probably about three or four times that. But by being under the GMEV's umbrella, there's a huge economy of scale with the way they've structured their administrative cost.
Okay.
And they didn't pay me to say that. That's just the way it works out.
Okay, Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. When you mentioned the rate of return that was used in the projections, did I hear you say 70% annually?
7.75%.
7.75%. And my only question was, as you looked at this and at those variations, is whether or not you took some other kind of worst-case scenarios into consideration? Because I think that in this market, even a 7.75% rate of return annually would be considered optimistic possibly. So, that would just be one question separate from the segment if we need to look at some more conservative rates of return.
Let me take a second to describe how that comes about and how we mitigate against the negative returns that might not hit 7.25% in the short term. What we did to come up with that return, we looked at the past history of the plan. We also got with the investment consultant, who is Callon Associates for the plan, and spoke with their representative to see what their projection of the various classes of investments are going to be over the next 10 years. Then, actuarially, we're actually trying to fund the plan over the next 30 to 50 years. So, the 7.25% is supposed to be representative of the investment return over a 30- to 40-year period. It is not a two- or three-year period. Now, having said that, since we're looking at it for a long-term basis, if you get, for example, a 20% return in one year, like we did in 2009, which was a very good year, we're not going to use all of that return in 2009 and put it right into your assets for valuation purposes. We're only going to recognize it one-tenth at a time over a 10-year period. By the same token, if we only get, say, a 5% return instead of 7.25%, that differential of 2.25% will be recognized in tenths over a 10-year period. That helps smooth out the fluctuations in the market because if we are designed for long-term funding, we need to behave as if it's a long-term nature. And so, our assumption is the city of Milton is a perpetuity and it's not going out of business any time in our lifetimes.
And that 10-year period, that's just a standard that's always utilized for those highs and lows?
Typically.
Okay.
Actually, let me, let me take that back. Typically around the nation, five years is more of a standard. The GMEV's program has used 10 consistently since before I started working with them. It's worked out real well for them. The state of California actually used 15, but I would argue the state of California went to 15 in the times like you said, Ms. Thurmond, is a bad time. GMEVs actually went into a 10-year funding period in the 90s when returns were so good, they didn't want their cities to get too complacent. So, they put the 10 in at that point to stretch the good returns out longer. But it, but it does help us now in a, in a bad return market, the reverse of it.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Keep mentioning this acronym. Are you talking about GMA or some other organization?
Georgia Municipal Association.
Oh.
Sorry. You know, actuaries do that all the time, and if I get, you know, throw something at me and tell me to explain what I'm talking about. So, that's exactly what I'm, sorry.
Okay. Bert? Joe? No? Okay.
The last section, and I'll go through this very, very briefly. You can read this information later. It goes into what Councilwoman Thurmond was talking about, about the difference between defined benefit and defined contribution plans. In the public sector, there are two major ways to provide retirement benefits. One is in a defined benefit plan, one is in a defined contribution plan. A defined benefit plan provides the employee with benefit security. You can't outlive your benefit. It encourages people to stay on the job. It encourages people to continue working with you. Defined contribution plans attack it from a different viewpoint. They create wealth so that when you come up for retirement, you have a pot of money that you have to then determine whether it's going to last you your lifetime or not. So, the risk of investment return on defined benefit is borne by the city primarily, and defined contribution plan is borne by the employee primarily. Both plans, however, have ancillary risks associated with them. For example, in the employee situation, the employee's risk in a, in a bad market with a DB plan is that the city might cut jobs, they might cut positions, and then the employee population could be hurt in that situation. On a defined contribution situation, market crashes, and you've been expecting people to retire, say, at 62 or 65, they might not be able to retire. So, now, your highest-paid employees won't go home, they keep staying on the job. So, there are ancillary risks associated with both plans that you just need to have to count the cost. And in your situation, you actually have a foot in both camps, so you have it spread. Now, you could internally argue, is the weighting what we want it to be? DB versus DC, do we need to modify the weighting? That's a long-term question you can look at and analyze internally, and the GMA staff, Segal, could help you with that. But right now, you have a balance of both of them in place. Slide 9, a lot of words, a lot of stuff in that slide. Slide 10, lots more words. I'm not going to go through those, okay? That's just background information. It goes through some of the details, pros and cons of defined benefit, defined contribution, where it's good for the employee, where it's good for the city, and you guys can read that and look at it. And I don't think there's anything here that's particularly new, but it is summarized into a nice spot here for further reference. The last thing I have for you tonight to look at is define, comparing the actual benefit delivery system, defined benefit for its defined contribution. Defined benefit plans are much more efficient in delivering income replacement after retirement. They are designed to replace income replacement, and they have three basic reasons how they do that. One, in a defined benefit structure, the employee is not responsible for the investing. A professional staff is responsible for investing. And if you believe professional staffs are better than people who have no training, then you should get a better return. Secondly, the employee has a shorter time horizon for their investments. The employee must have their money in place by the time they retire. They must have that money to be able to stretch out for them for the rest of their life. They can't afford the ups and downs in the market. So, typically, we see long-term, because of the asset allocation, employees in a defined contribution system will return about 2% less than a similar type of plan in a defined benefit plan because of that avoidance of risk by the employee on the investment side. The city typically, or the public entity typically, because you have a long investment cycle, you can do things like smooth the assets, you can do things like amortize losses. Those are not available to the employee. That's why the returns typically are a little better. The last point is, in a defined benefit plan, you are pooling the risk of death. For example, we think on average, your employees are going to die about age 80. Some of them are going to die at age 70, some are going to live to age 90. If I have to fund the benefit myself, and I say, I'm going to fund it so I live to be 80, and I really live to be 90, I'd mess myself up. So, the employee has to fund toward 90. That's why the replacement ratios tend to be a little smaller for them. It does build wealth. It does build greater flexibility as far as your dollars, you have personal control, but also gives you personal license to do things with it. So, that's just a summary of the plans. Ms. Mayor?
It's my understanding now, under most defined contribution plans, the employer does have some liability, and employees aren't out there investing the money themselves. Usually, there are, you know, they have pots or whatever that they will put the money in, and you don't have an employee choosing, you know, nickel stocks.
No.
So, I don't really think you can say that the investment return is necessarily higher.
Oh, yes, you can. It's proven. And the reason is, think of it this way. They're not investing nickel stocks, but they have selected things. But you have, let's say you only have two investment options, US fixed income or US equity. Those are your only two options. Long-term, everyone that's in the investment market will tell you, long-term, equities are supposed to outdo fixed income roughly 2 to 1. The employee, because they are more fearful of the equity market, will invest more heavily in the fixed income, and so their, their ratio of equity to fixed income might be 60% fixed and 40% equity. Whereas, a defined benefit plan, investing for the long haul, is more apt to be 60% equity and 40% fixed.
Well, you're assuming that you only have the two pots. Most plans I'm familiar with have a mix of things that the employees can choose from. So, it's not like you have to either choose, you know, your 1% money market or your high-risk stocks. There's, there's pots that have both in it.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is that the prevalence of employees is to pick more fixed income rather than equity exposure because they, especially when they get closer to retirement, they cannot stomach the ups and downs of the stock market because they have no way to smooth that out. And so, overall, their return is less.
Well, I'd like to get, you give us a case study here with graphs. I'd like to get the, the actual facts and numbers behind this because I think, you know, in order to really understand what this is telling us, telling us that, you know, the cost of a defined benefit plan is much less than a defined contribution. That is not my experience at all. And so, I would really like to get the numbers where you are getting this information from to back this up because I've seen lots and lots of case studies that tell you the exact opposite of this.
Okay. Remember, on Slide 11, we're looking at here, we're not talking about the cost of the plan, we're talking about the benefit delivery system.
Right.
And a defined benefit plan delivers significantly more benefits on a dollar-for-dollar basis than a defined contribution plan. But what I'll do, I'll probably run it through the GMA, is have them send you the backing documentation from this and the study that actually generated this and the other supporting documentation.
Yeah, I mean, I believe they probably provide more, but in my experience is, they also cost a business or a city or municipality a whole lot more on the long term, too. So, you would expect them to provide more to the, to the employees. So, I would just like to see the numbers behind it. And I agree with Julie. I'd like to see it. I mean, 7.75%, I mean, that would be a wonderful rate of return, but I think all of us would love to get that right now. But I don't know that that's going to be realistic going.
But again, in a defined benefit plan, you can't focus on the one- or two- or three-year period. You focus on a 30-year period. And either 30 is forward or 30 is backward, 7.25% is actually right in the wheelhouse of what everyone has done.
I'd like to see what has been done in the, in the GMA's plan in the last 10 years. So.
I can tell you that the average annual return for 29 years running, last I checked, was 9.04%. So.
I'd like to see what it has been like for the last 10 years, though, because I think we're in a much volatile economy now than, you know, what we were in.
And that's why our board did, did adjust it from down to 7.25%.
Okay. Anybody else question or comment?
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Okay, I'm going to assume we probably don't have any public comment, do we?
No, sir.
Okay. Will the city clerk please sound the next agenda item?
Discussion on whether or not to proceed with evaluating the Milton Sign Code for a possible text amendment to the Highway 9 overlay specifically dealing with neon signs. This is being presented by Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Okay, so, I don't have to go to the podium. I can just sit here and talk.
Please state your name and address for the right.
Yeah. Joe Longoria, 14341, Bucks, Oklahoma, Milton, Georgia. So, we have a situation, well, I don't want to call it a situation because that sounds too, too drastic, but as everybody knows, the Highway 9 overlay too drastic, but as everybody knows, the Highway 9 overlay has a lot in common with the other overlay districts that we have in the city, and one of those is how we define our sign ordinances. And specifically, you know, we call out, you know, requirements for signs, what signs have to adhere to in terms of their makeup, their color, a whole bunch of other things. And one of the very specific things that we call out, both under all of the overlay district sign components, as well as a Division VII, which refers to night sky illumination, is the forbiddance or the neon signs are just not allowed. And we had a citizen call in not too long ago about one of our local businesses, they had a neon sign up. Actually, they had quite a few neon signs up, and they questioned whether or not that was allowed in the Highway 9 area. And of course, it's not. So, I thought, well, gosh, I see quite a few neon signs, because I drive up and down Highway 9 all the time. So, I thought it would be interesting to just see, you know, what is the situation with the neon signs? And I talked about this with Chris a little bit, and of the roughly 60 businesses that we have located in the Highway 9 overlay district, and those would be, I would say, retail properties that front Highway 9, about 50% of them have neon signs, either displayed in their windows, incorporated as part of the decor, or, you know, really, I don't want to say promoting their business, but making people aware of their business. And so, I thought, well, gosh, you know, for, to have these ordinances in effect and not being enforcing them is probably not, you know, the best situation in the world. And I don't want to drag into the discussion anything about any other overlay district, because I didn't go out and look at the Crab Apple area or any of the other areas. This is specifically having to do with Highway 9. So, I wanted to just discuss a text amendment that would delete the reference to neon signs in terms of the types of signs that are not allowed in the Highway 9 overlay. And, or, at least I want to discuss it, because to me, we really only have two options. Either we start enforcing the ordinances across all the businesses that are there, which I've got a couple of examples of things that I think would be very, very difficult for us to enforce, or we take those ordinances out of effect. So, that's, that was the purpose of this discussion.
I've got a quick question for staff. What, how do you really define what is a neon sign and what is just a sign that is lit? Because there's a difference, correct?
Well, there are LED signs, there are, and it mentions several of the different types in the ordinance, LEDs, tube light signs, fluorescent signs, but they're all under the category window sign. So, if it's, if it's a sign, meaning it conveys a message, and it's in the window, then it's a window sign. I mean, and like I said, and those can, those come in all shapes and sizes. Neon and the lit signs are those that we do not allow by the, per the ordinance now from a code enforcement standpoint. I will say that, yes, we did notice the ones in particular that were, that were reported to Councilman Longoria, and our code enforcement did go out there and say, "Hey, this is too much." But I'll also concede that almost every business that's got retail foot traffic or outside foot traffic that comes in has an open sign. It's typically a neon or LED-type sign that's right next to their door. So, where's the line?
And, you know, I know we, we can't get into substance of the sign and what it says, but I think the issue is, I'm going to assume, most people would not want just, you know, neon signs everywhere and wrapped around buildings and whatnot, but I do think most every business and most of the businesses on Highway 9, whether it's Milton or Alpharetta or Fulton County, do have a, I'll just use for a reference, an open sign, little neon open sign. And to me, I think that's the biggest issue, because...
Yeah, well, it was interesting, exactly what you said. I mean, almost everybody has an open sign. That's either neon, or it's some kind of high-tech lighting that would fall into this category. But quite a few of the businesses, I mean, if we compare it to the retail establishment in question, I mean, they were not the worst offender. There are other, you know, establishments on Highway 9 that have either just as many or more neon signs as that place does, and so, you know, I just, it seems like, you know, we're sort of at odds there in terms of what's reality and what we're supposed to have.
And I think, you know, I certainly would support, because I think it's important for the businesses to be allowed to at least have the open sign. And again, I know we can't say, you know, what they have on it, but maybe even come up with a size of that and say, you know, "You're allowed one," you know, because it's probably, you know, I know, I know, if we drive down the road, and that's what you look at to see if they're open. And again, like I say, if Alpharetta, Roswell, Milton, Forsyth, you know, we're really going to hurt our businesses if they're the only ones that don't have an open sign.
Yeah. Lynn, this is the signage part of what gets approved, either by the Design Review Board or by any one of the other steps that we have in the process right now?
Signage permit is an entirely separate approval. So, when they get their building permit, typically, they might show a few signs, but they're not permitted until those signs actually come in under separate permit. So, just because they show them on a building plan, for instance, doesn't mean they're approved, and vice versa. They're, you know, they're not approved until they get that sign permit. So, a lot of times, they won't show anything on the plan, and then they'll come in with a sign permit request later, and either sometimes I have to ask for a variance or whatnot, but, and then there are those that just show up.
Do they have to have a sign permit for the little open signs that are in the windows? Are they supposed to? I mean, I know they do for the big signs on the buildings, the monument signs and all that, but what about the little open sign in the window?
You can have up to five, in Highway 9, you can have up to 5% of window signs without an additional permit. So, you don't have to permit that as long as you stay under that 5%.
As long as they're not lit in some...
Well, yeah, when you get into lighting them and whatnot, that's a whole separate thing.
But you're talking about if they can have a paper-type banner.
Paper, a decal, a banner, whatever, as long as it's not more than 5%.
Okay, so, how is 5% calculated?
5% is the gross area of the window panels outside of any doors or spandrels. So, anything directly above the door or the door itself is not counted towards that calculation. And that's spelled out in the ordinance, too.
Yeah, I didn't refer, I didn't pull all the ordinances in. I just, I went to Municode and did a search on neon signs, and those are the ones that came back, so...
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I think the other edge of that sword is, Design Review addresses the amount of windows in business, in building elevations, too. So, they're kind of catching it from both sides.
In fact, there are a lot of places where we require a certain amount of windows. However, they're not, the inactuality when it's built out, when the space is built out and the interior, the finish, it's not really being used as a window. In fact, there are walls on the interior.
Yeah.
And so, what you see is either a blank or a picture.
You know, and I'm aware of the situation, got you started thinking about this, but what, you know, in bringing this up, what's your thoughts? What direction would you like to get some?
Well, I thought, to me, it's going to be very difficult for us to go and enforce the ordinances for some of these establishments, because although it'd be interesting to check on the 5% thing, because I didn't realize that there was a specific test in place, and some of these might not be issues based on that, so...
Well, there would still be an issue being neon.
Yes, if they're neon, they're still an issue.
That's a question, is it neon or...
All right, so, then again, we're back to either changing the ordinance so that we don't call out neon signs specifically, or we're in some kind of a permitting situation where neon signs are allowed, except you have to just get a special permit for a neon sign, and gosh, that seems like a, one more thing that we don't need to do. So, I'm just here to report that all these businesses, most of our businesses in Highway 9 have neon signs, and a lot of our businesses, it's not just an open sign, it's a, it's a lot of signage that's neon.
And I would remind you, though, that there are several signs that are grandfathered in that area that were...
Okay, I looked for grandfathered items, and I couldn't find any reference to that in any of the ordinances. Where do we document what's grandfathered and what's not?
That would have had to been a sign inventory, which I'm not sure has ever been done. But they have to show that they've had that sign in place since the time we enacted the ordinance.
So, since before the city was incorporated?
Well, since the Highway 9 overlay portion was enacted. So, whenever it was enacted in Fulton County, and I don't have that date.
And that was prior to the incorporation.
Well, most of these businesses that I'm thinking of have sprung up since then, so...
We do know of several, yes, sir. And we're aware of those.
I think, according to our sign ordinance, those grandfathered signs expire when the businesses change.
When they change, what does that mean?
Change owners or...
Ah.
Change of tenure.
Well, that would make sense, because probably the message they want to convey would probably need to change as well. I mean, you don't advertise for Joe's Pizza when it's now Rick's, so I mean...
I guess an open sign could go from one to another, but...
Right, an open sign, but the neons typically have this express name of the business, so it would make sense they would expire.
Sure. Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. I guess a couple of thoughts. One is from a code enforcement perspective, and Lynn, I don't know if that's you or Chris that might want to speak to it, because I think that the first issue is, what are we doing about code enforcement? And when we have ordinances on the books, whether those be ordinances that we adopted as a function of becoming a city, and/or when we went through a pretty exhaustive process that involved businesses as well as citizens, what are we doing from a code enforcement perspective? I think that that's one issue, and I think that it is important, as Councilmember Longoria stated, is that when we have ordinances, I think it's fair to, the businesses need to expect that there'll be consistent application of the laws, as the citizens would, not to mention we as their jurisdiction. So, maybe from my perspective, the first thing would be to address, what are we doing to ensure that we're consistently applying all of our ordinances? Because I think that that is important. The next would be to look back and think about those that were involved, citizens and businesses, and putting in place that Highway 9 overlay to begin with. Obviously, a lot of the developers and landowners were part of that process, and we heard, obviously, from a lot of citizens that live in the area, that were concerned about signage being perhaps a little bit different in Milton than it might be in other places, because they were concerned about the look and feel. And in particular, you know, we continue to hear from folks, including the more recent Highway 9 overlay group that came together, that represented businesses and landowners and developers, that were concerned about making sure that that overlay helped to enhance Highway 9 as opposed to detract from it. So, I just would caution us, when we think about Highway 9, that we are mindful that a lot of, some of those overlay components that were there were so that Highway 9 continued to maintain a mixed field that could be conducive for business, but also still appropriate for residential development and mixed use. So, first question, I guess, would be code enforcement, and then the other would be an update from staff. I know that we've talked about, and I think that staff has on their kind of list of priorities, to look at the sign ordinance, along with planning commission, and hopefully some input from the Design Review Board. And so, if we could maybe have an update on that as well, just as we contemplate this within the context of those other items.
Sure. I can start with code enforcement. Okay. I'll say this, we do have a code enforcement officer who is helped by our city arbiters. They have been doing a lot of proactive work as far as working with the citizenry in order to make them aware of what some of the codes are, so that they, the citizens can kind of police themselves without being deputized, quote-unquote. So, they've been working on it from that angle. I can say that we have to take, because we get so many complaints and concerns and issues via the telephone and email, along with the typical issues like business license renewals, those things that we know are regular, our sign sweeps that we do, those other items that are kind of regular, ongoing issues. We get so many of these other complaints that we are more reactive than we are proactive. And so, we are trying to and attempting to enforce things across the board as much as we can, but we're having to pick and choose our priorities. Right now, one of the biggest items that we have to address and tackle as far as code enforcement goes are foreclosed and abandoned homes and lots, and keeping those maintained. And frankly, there is a lot of legwork behind those that is totally behind the scenes. No one, the call comes in, the complaint, you know, gets recorded, we go work the file, but in working that file, the citizen may not see any action for quite some time, simply because it takes that long to find a responsible party to take action with and for. So, what you're seeing is, it doesn't look like there may be a lot happening, but there is a lot happening behind the scenes. So, that's been a lot of our focus right now, and in fact, staff is working on coming up with some appropriate recommendations for action for the council, as far as maybe some additional ordinances or some other registries or listings that might occur in order to help us to get this enforcement happening and to make people aware that they do need to continue to enforce it, because we are going to look for that. And the second one would be signs, and signs are such a difficult item to enforce. I mean, there are those permitted signs where they have to get permits, because they've got to get electrical hookups, and they've got to get other structural and mechanical requirements. And then there are those signs you can just plug in or just hang up, and they just show up. We're working on that via doing sign sweeps. We've done one almost every, about every other month fairly consistently since I got here. We do them on the weekends so that we can get those bandit signs, which is what we tend to end up with more than anything else, our bandit signs and banners for those. We talk to...
Bandit signs?
Well, okay, sorry, that's a term of art. Yes, they show up for the weekend. They're the small, stick-in-the-ground kind of call-your-attention-to-a-grand-opening or a sale or something.
Like Alpharetta's got a really bigger deal of businesses there, because they pop up all weekend, and we take them...
Yep, they typically show up on Friday at 6:00, yeah, when everybody's come home.
Oh, really?
It specifies from Friday till Sunday, yeah. Yeah. Those signs are actually, it's not that they just don't sweep them, they're legal.
But Lynn, I agree, education's a very big and important part of this. Is there a way for us to put together some kind of pamphlet that we could send out with the business license renewal when they go out in, when they go out in December? And so, that way, people will understand what our rules are and almost, you know, kind of letting them know, "Hey, this is what you're allowed, this is what you're not allowed."
Absolutely.
I just think that that would, you know, at least help, and that way, when someone shows up on their doorstep and they can't plead complete ignorance.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea.
And maybe there'd be some out there that would be willing to take down signs that they have that are not legal. I will tell you, when we did the sign ordinance, I did work with some of the Highway 9 people originally. What led us to this was the, what was used to be in Eckerd's right there at Highway 9 and Main Street and Old Milton Parkway, because when it showed up, it had every square inch of its front with signs hanging down one foot from the window, so they weren't window signs, they were hanging down one foot from the window, but they were all lit, and I mean, it covered up the entire window at that time. And so, that's really what led us initially to be kind of restrictive and put the wording in there, so that if they can be seen at all from the outside, and it can only be the 5%, because, you know, they advertised about anything you wanted to, and it was all a foot away.
And it became visually very distracting, and the citizens and business owners felt that it was a detractor from what otherwise was an attractive sort of business. You know, and for a lot of the folks that Councilmember Thurman is referring to, you know, yes, they were business owners, commercial landowners, but they also wanted to create an environment of a place that was distinct and different from some of the other traditional kind of strip shopping center locations, and one way that they wanted to help distinguish themselves was so that the signage would be more consistent and have a higher standard and be more attractive. And the unfortunate thing is that as soon as you start looking at neon and internally lit signs, the variety becomes pretty extensive, and it can very quickly become visually unattractive based on the citizens and business owners that really helped to kind of put some of this stuff in place. And I think that that's what's difficult, is if you could say, "Well, gee, if you had really good taste, you could have a really small one." Unfortunately, it's difficult to have that sort of...
And I guess the challenge there is, that's not an objective measurement.
And I guess the challenge there is, is that's not an objective measurement, it's subjective. I mean, looks, what, what somebody looks at and says, oh, that's unattractive, somebody else is going to look at it and say, wow, that really adds to the decor. So that's going to be very difficult for us to figure out. So I'm just trying to get a handle on, you know, how do we go to one business operator and tell them, sorry, the neon signs have to go, and yet, you know, 27...
You gotta be consistent.
Yeah, 27 other establishments.
You gotta be consistent.
Well, and where we really need to pull this back around is to Councilmember Longoria's issue that you brought up. And, you know, Chris, to staff, do you guys need any direction for us now? I mean, I know we're gonna, we're gonna be presented with sign, a lot of sign information and discuss that, but, you know, right now for this particular issue, both with code enforcement and a direction we go that maybe, you know, you guys take in mind as you're, you're presenting the future stuff to us?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess the direction we're looking for tonight is partly because of the flow chart that we passed as to how a text amendment to a zoning, to the zoning ordinance occurs. And that flow chart was specific that if it was council member driven, that its first step was to a work session to find out if there was a majority supporting the council, for us to start it through the process. And obviously, that means it goes to, staff would review it, it would go to CZIM and planning commission and the whole list of, of stuff here. That probably is one thing we need direction on tonight, is whether or not we take this particular topic and start it through that process. The other thing that would be helpful for staff to understand tonight, because as Lynn very well explained, we have taken, and if there's fault to be placed here, y'all place it right with me. We have taken and looked at where we think our resources are best served with the code enforcement department, with the time that they have, with the number of complaints that come in, and us and Alpharetta, you name it, around here, the number one thing we are all dealing with right now are these abandoned properties with tall grass. And Lynn is right, it is, it takes a lot of hours to find somebody who really doesn't want to be found, to be told they have to spend money that they really don't have to cut their grass. So, you know, when, when we looked at what is more, what is more damaging to the citizens of Milton, it's the neighbor who can't get their abandoned house next to their grass cut than it is us going up and down Highway 9 and saying, you gotta take your open signs down. You know, if that direction, if, if, if one of those is more important to you all than the other, I'd like to know that too. It's, it's not, doesn't have anything to do with, with us not wanting to enforce the law that's out there. It's our trying to pick what's the best use and what's the best one to enforce first. And with what we're dealing with right now, and if you were to check with the other cities, and we've done this to kind of just see if we're unique and that we have more of these than other cities. Alpharetta's running, or processing somewhere between 70 and 75 tall grass complaints per week through their code enforcement department. I mean, it's turned, obviously, they have more developments that have started that have gone, you know, kind of, kind of south. But that is where the bulk of the time in code enforcement is going right now, that with the sign sweeps and some of the maintenance things. We can very easily say, you know, code enforcement folks, let's, let's spend a good couple of weeks and let's really make an effort at cleaning up Highway 9, and let's get these neon signs down, and let's, you know, let's, let's go that route. In trying to figure out how best to prioritize our work, that was not, we went the other direction. If we need to change it, we'll change it. It doesn't mean that the law is any less effective there, but on a scale of when are more people damaged and how do we seem to be able to best help the citizens of Milton quickly, you know, the sound of the times is kind of where we put our resources. So I know, Mayor, that was a long answer to a very short question. But kind of two things I'm looking for tonight is, one, does this start through the process? Either as it's defined to completely open up neon signs in the Highway 9, to open up a discussion on whether or not we would permit a certain square footage of neon or internally lit sign, or whether it just dies here tonight. And then also to see if the priorities that kind of we've set as those that supervise code enforcement, if you all think that those priorities are wrong, we can change those as quick as tomorrow.
I'd like to make a couple of suggestions. You know, I certainly think that this issue that Councilmember Longoria's brought up could certainly work its way into the big picture of signage and go to all the committees and whatnot. But I think tonight, what we need to do is give some direction, do we want to add that to? Or I'm real, I'm still not real sure on what the, what your intention is or the councils will. You know, bottom line, sounds like we've got, you know, we either go and, and take them all down or we work forward and allow a certain, you know, whether it's a square footage or, you know, we change our sign ordinance a little bit. So, you know, that's the one direction. Are we looking to, right now to go to the existing ones, and we'll talk about code enforcement in a minute, and eliminate all open signs or any neon signs? Or are we looking at maybe, you know, addressing that issue in the big picture later? So that's one thing, we kind of need direction from the council. The other thing, and I probably get, I'm just guessing that I get more calls than anybody on this, but I certainly don't want to direct staff to, to go out and get the sign police and hit every business, because that's probably one of the number one complaints I get all the time from citizens and businesses that we're, you know, we're just trying to drive them all out of business. So, you know, my personal opinion is that's not the direction that I think you've handled the allotment fine. But I'll kind of open that up first to the council. Is this something that we want to include this discussion in our further in signs? You know, in our, our big look at signs and the sign ordinance? Or do we want to have a separate that just deals with, with these issues? And which direction are we looking at going?
Yeah, I mean, I guess taking out the word neon sign is one of the prohibited signs. It doesn't mean that all of a sudden neon signs are rampant, it just means they fall into the same category as other signs do. And so then they've got to be permitted, and they've got to be managed the way we would manage any other kind of sign. So from a certain point of view, you know, taking the word neon sign out helps all the businesses that have a neon sign today, because now they're not breaking the law, they're just, they just haven't gotten the right permit. If the, the sign is of a certain size or density or whatever it is we, we measure that by. So, I mean, I think that that would be a worthwhile step, but that's just me.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I certainly understand the issue. I would be interested to know how many of those, I mean, you said 50% of the signs of Highway 9 have a neon sign. I'd be interested in knowing how many of those 50% were actually an open sign versus, you know, like, I can think of businesses in particular that are, you know, really focused on the beer signs and that kind of thing. But nevertheless, I know we can't address what signs say constitutionally. I would not be in favor of changing the ordinance. We do have a Highway 9 Design Standards Committee that's, that's looking at all things Highway 9 with a specific charge to improve, not detract, from the look of Highway 9 and its recommendations. And I don't know if that Highway 9 committee has looked at signage or not.
Let me, I can answer that. They have only looked at it in terms of what is currently allowed or disallowed. They have not looked to change any.
Okay. And I know that staff is also looking at the sign ordinance in general and providing recommendations in that regard. I think that's good enough right now. I think we are running the risk of going down a slippery slope if we change our ordinances every time there's something that we're not consistent enforcing, because there are many, many things that we're probably not consistent enforcing because of competing priorities and other things, as even Chris has pointed out, that we would end up changing our ordinances and we would pretty soon look like crap because we're just changing to, to meet what we see out there, and I don't think we need to do that. I think the pamphlet idea is a great idea. You know, I, I think that to go out, it doesn't cost us any more money to, I mean, the pamphlet may cost a little bit more money, but to go out with the packet when we send out business license, just to tell them, look, this is on the books, you may not be aware of it. We may, you know, we, we will enforce this at some point, so you need to be looking in that direction. The cities and state health departments that I work with, they have codes on, on the books that they don't always enforce, and then they come around and they start enforcing them, and how they solve it is that they do educate them and say, look, we know we've had this, this rule in place for decades, we know we haven't been enforcing it, but we are going to start enforcing it, and this is why, and this is how you need to bring yourself into compliance. I think that's important, and that would be what I would recommend us do going forward. I think our code enforcement priorities right now are right on target as far as dealing with those issues, because I mean, that, you know, a, a house that's in foreclosure or that has been abandoned, you know, runs the risk of depreciating all the values of, of every house around there. And that's really where we need to focus right now. Not, not to ignore the signs, but, you know, that's where we need to focus our code enforcement.
And I'm just going to go down the line, let everybody speak once, and kind of try to tabulate what the direction, Bert?
I'd like to, if we're going to really and truly look at our sign ordinance and revisit it, and that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be revamped or changed dramatically or at all, but instead of going at one little piece here, one little piece there, I'd, I'd be more in favor of rolling this into the big picture and looking at it at that point. I think that just makes better sense, and I'm in agreement with our priorities on the enforcement issues.
And, you know, again, I started that direction that, you know, I think this is certainly an important issue, but maybe it is best handled in the big picture. But I was just trying to give staff a little direction as to how we should handle it. You know, my personal opinion is I, I don't want to see rampant neon signs everywhere, because I think that does detract, but, you know, I'd be in favor of if, if we could limit us, take whatever the measurement of the typical open sign is and, you know, allow that and a lighted sign or whatever, maybe in a window or next to your door, something that, you know, without telling them what it has to say on it, but it, it really just defines that. But that being said, the only other point I want to make that, you know, I'm not sure if maybe Councilmember Tarte or Bert said it, but, you know, some of our ordinances, and maybe somebody else did too, you know, we're what, five years, four years old now? Yeah, and we, you know, we, we passed a lot of ordinances in the beginning. And quite honestly, we, you know, just accepted and passed a lot of Fulton County ordinances and whatnot. And a lot of those, staff deals with every day, I'm doing, I'm sure some council members. You know, the problem was, people didn't enforce them back, back then. So now we're running into situations. So I don't, I think we should all expect that at some point, maybe it's four years, five years down the road, we do need to look at our ordinances, you know, in the big picture, so it's not, you know, we shouldn't be embarrassed that we're looking at changing our ordinances. I think it's healthy every now and then to, to look at it with the future. So again, I'm certainly open to look at our sign ordinance or any others, and I said earlier, I'm on board with code enforcement, so.
Sorry, I had to get up there, my wife just texted me and said, I'm thinking, I think I'm burning the house down, so... No, I, she, you know, cars occasionally sizzle when you turn them off. I said, just, it's... Backing out of the garage, freaked out, a woman a little bit.
Just start the bar with the...
I don't get those very often, where I looked out and it says, I think I'm burning the house down, and I'm like, whoa, wait a minute.
She's very calm.
You knew where a couple of fire departments were located that could have sent your wife?
Absolutely, it's an issue. And I think it's a business development issue for sure. I think our, our incentive here is to promote business development and not discourage it. I think it ought to be, like Bert says, a discussion about the, the entire sign ordinance. I think we need to start piecemealing it. I think, like Alan was saying, though, we recognize that there have been violations out there, and I think we need a plan to notify these folks and, you know, set forth a, a time period where it needs to be corrected possibly. But I know how this goes hand in hand with reviewing the entire sign ordinance. I think letting them continue to violate the ordinance is kind of tacit approval of what they've installed out there. But going to your discussion about keeping up with the, the tall grass out there, I think the situation at hand now is, deserves higher priority than addressing a sign issue. However, we can work this into the program going forward down, down the road without upsetting your priorities there, I think that's, that's your call, too.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I just always appreciate healthy dialogue on, on anything and everything, I think this is one example of those. I would agree that having neon signs be part of the overview, you know, of, and again, I don't, I don't think that there was ever an intent that we re-hall or reconstitute all of our ordinances, but that the staff, along with the planning commission, the design review board, and perhaps the Highway 9 overlay group, as those collective entities together, look at what things might they collectively recommend, that one of those things could of course take into account what you presented to us this evening. I think what I hear, at least my perception from a lot of folks on the council this evening, is the need for just consistent application of our laws, regardless of what they are. And I don't know if, if at the end of this discussion, if we could just get some input from our city attorney to make sure that if, if we're having to prioritize where our resources are enforcing codes and where they're not, just to, to ensure that we're not setting ourselves up for any legal liability. I think that the idea that Councilmember Thurman brought forward about education and was reiterated by Councilmember Tart is critical. And I think we just need to hear from our city attorney at the end of this as to whether or not that sort of proactive education, as well as the fact that that information is out there and has been all along, that that hopefully doesn't undermine the legal, the constitutionality of our existing ordinances. I think we do probably tonight before we close need to confirm that. But I would very much support proactive communication, not only in a pamphlet form, but also on the website. And maybe that's something that, you know, in the near term could be put out to point people to where that is. Another question I had, just as I hear our city manager speak to some of this kind of unusual need at the moment because of high numbers of foreclosure, is just whether or not, separate from tonight's discussion, is there a need to help in a temporary way to give some additional resources so that we don't have an issue of having to prioritize where both are important, and not even just these two. I'm sure that there's other code enforcement issues that are important, that citizens expect there to be a proactive code enforcement, not to be the police, but just to help to enforce those codes. So one thing that strikes me is, are we appropriately allocating resources? Not because you're not doing that, but do we have appropriate resources? And are there some temporary methods, you know, do we have a, can we collaboratively work with Alpharetta or Johns Creek? You know, do they have some excess capacity that we could have some sort of a shared resource approach? I know we're doing that in other areas. So just a thought, don't, surely don't expect an answer this evening. I know that you creatively look at those sorts of things all the time.
And I'll tell you, I, I don't think any of the other cities have, and I don't know that that's, that's one of those things we would want to abdicate to different jurisdictions, just because they're good at enforcing the law that they're good at.
Right.
And they, you know, to, our law's not the same as Alpharetta's
Correct.
or Johns Creek or Roswell. What we are looking at at a staff level is a mechanism by which, and I'll kind of let the cat out of the bag a little bit, but I'm probably going to not let it out real far yet, because I don't want to, you know, all of a sudden have everybody figure out this is what we're going to do, and then us change the directions, we put a plan together. But what we're looking at right now is a mechanism by which we can craft something very similar to what some other cities in Fulton County have done. Union City, prime example, for those that want to jot down, look at what Union City's doing. Where we free up, really, we, we free up a lot of the time that code enforcement spends on dealing with this kind of biggest issue that they're dealing with right now. Free them up to do some of the other things and not have them spend as much time on trying to figure out who to go after to clean up a property. We wouldn't call it the same thing, but you go look at a city like Union City and you'll see they put into, put a program in place called Clean &amp; Lean, L-I-E-N, where it's not necessarily hours and hours and hours of tracking down an owner. At some point, the city now, Union City, has the authority just to affect the cleanup and recover its costs at some point in the future. And that, when we look at it on a, what are we paying our code enforcement officer? And what's the return on our investment for the amount of time they're taking to get to the same result? Where does that balance lie?
In the hours mowing versus...
It's almost like self-help in a neighborhood.
It is. So, you know, there's, this is not, you know, not tonight, we're all of a sudden saying, oh, gosh, we got a problem, we got to figure out how to become more efficient with our code enforcement. We get that, we're trying to figure out what, based on some other best practices, what might make the most sense for us.
So it sounds like you're thinking creatively, that was going to be my suggestion, just that we support that so that it's not a function of gee, which of our laws do we enforce, but how do we do it efficiently? And so thank you for that creative thought.
I wish I was Steve Raps and came up with that idea, it's been well circulated, well loved.
Well, again, it's like creative sort of approach.
How we find the best ideas. But sometimes how we find the best ideas.
Yeah.
Um, and then just coming back specifically to the sign ordinance, and I, I don't know that we specifically addressed it, but, um, could you just speak real quickly with the fact, just confirming that that is something on kind of a list of many things to do within staff, but working with Planning Commission, um, the DRB and the overlay, and Highway Nine Overlay Group?
Yes, in fact, um, that was one of the Planning Commission priorities, if you remember, and it was high on the list, and so we are looking at that currently. We've got a couple of planning commissioners kind of assigned themselves to a, an informal subcommittee to talk about, um, signage and our sign ordinance, and where we've found some holes and some places that we need to fill in, uh, and looking at some new ideas in order to allow a little bit more flexibility while not necessarily allowing more signage, but more flexibility.
So, that'll be, that's underway, to the mayor's point, that's underway, and that obviously this dialogue as well as others could be part of that.
Right. And in fact, we are talking with folks from, um, we're, we're inviting folks from the Milton Business Alliance, as well as trying to involve folks that are, um, on Highway Nine and other places, so.
Okay. And just another thought in this pamphlet is it might be helpful, because a lot of times some open signs in other places, Charleston and Hilton Head, you know, an open sign can promote their business without having to be neon, um, and a lot of great places across the United States and internationally that have high standards for the look of the sign still are very economically viable, they just have better designs. And so, um, that may be another suggestion within this educational pamphlet, is that we could offer up some suggestions, not a, no, you can't have it, but gee, neon sign doesn't work, but here's some alternatives that, that are positive. Um, and I, and again, I think that that's where the businesses that Karen Thurman, or the Councilmember Thurman was speaking to, as well as citizens, had moved in, in anticipating that of course we want to have economic development, but we want to do it in a way that's still aesthetically pleasing, and that really benefits the businesses in the long term, because it helps to create a positive shopping environment for the whole. And I think that's the movement in Crab Apple, it's obviously been the movement in Birmingham. Hopefully, that'll be the movement when we move towards something in Arnold Mill, when we look at a master plan. Um, so I just think sometimes that those details need to be communicated more broadly, um, and hopefully that'll help arrive at some, it's a good balance.
And, and not to break in, but it, it sounds like all those are discussions we'll have, but we're looking for direction, which I think we're getting the direction, that we want to have this, um, dialogue, but when we go, you know, go through the process, it'll get the, the committees will come back to it, so. But, so it sounds like you're on board with that too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Karen?
My turn. Um, number one, let's keep cutting grass. We don't like, we don't like, um, tall grass, it does reduce everything. Number two, um, I believe we need to look at the sign ordinance as a whole, rather than just looking at one part of it, because I believe there are parts of it that do need to be changed. I believe there are parts of it that are outdated, and there are other ways of us doing things that would be pro-business, um, and would really help our business community, uh, while at the same time make, make things look better. Number three, I believe we do need to educate people. I would love to see something go out with the business license this year that doesn't just tell them, you know, you can only have this size sign, and you can only have your dumpster emptied on this time, but really is a, you know, thanks for doing business in Milton type pamphlet, and this is what our, what you, we've got going for us as far as, um, this is what our population is, and this is what our, you know, average income is, and this is why it's a good thing to be doing business in the city of Milton, and, and by the way, these are, you know, these are kind of the rules that we want to make sure everybody follows, so that the businesses that are here are all at a very high level. So, I'd love to see something going out with business licenses that was very positive about what they need to do.
I think I've heard that from more than a few people, and I would certainly support that too, so maybe, Chris, that's something that, that maybe Jason or, you know, city could be working on and bring back to us, so that's, it sounds like the majority counsel likes it.
Jason looks like a good person for that.
Is he here?
He left.
Jason, if you're watching at home, you're going to project.
You feel really good about that. Another he is! Here he is! Yes!
I was going to say, Jason, I was going to say, Jason, if you're watching at home, you need to get a lard.
He says, no, I'm still here and I still have a life, right?
All right.
That'd be a good project for you.
Yeah, you, uh, sign pamphlet?
Yeah. Well, that sign-
This is a positive business pamphlet.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, staff.
Okay. So, I got what I needed, uh, there, thank you all.
All right. Yes. Well, journey.
Sounds good.
Okay. Alan, I just got something on the head, so we're good. Lydia, Linda, Lydia, Lydia, Cunningham?
Yeah.
She just emailed, so we're good.